Seven point two four adjournment to an open meeting. Do I have a motion?
Go move.
Ms. Heinz?
We need a real roll call vote?
Yes. Yep.
All right, we have Ms. Abney Mitchell.
President.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Ms. May.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Yes.
President Gray.
Yes.
Seven zero, motion carries.
All right, next on the agenda, we have recognitions and presentations by Dr. Dignan.
Thanks, Board President Gray. Please bear with me, this is a Board of Education recognition resolution from the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency. It says, whereas the Board of Education of the thirty-three constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for every child attending their schools, and whereas these exceptional public servants demonstrate enthusiasm to their duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of students of Wayne County, the educators that support the students daily and their communities, and whereas the Wayne County school boards are resilient advocates for the needs of students in their community and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington, and whereas Wayne County school boards are committed to advancing the student achievement and well-being in the schools and communities they serve, and whereas Wayne County school boards understand the importance of access, opportunity, equity, excellence in education for its students, and recognize that equality education is the most important factor in the success of our community, state, and country, and whereas local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education, and whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become informed, productive contributors to society in an ever-changing world, and whereas the State of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January two thousand twenty-four as the School Board Recognition Month, and whereas School Board Recognition Month is the ideal time to recognize and celebrate Wayne County residents serving on school districts governing boards of education who help guide the education of pupils in pre-K through grade twelve and who prepare these pupils for a global competitiveness at this time, if we could give our school board members a round of applause.
Thank you Superintendent Dignan. The next item is two-two-nine point two four. Oh, and thank you to the rest of the board members here as well. Yeah, the next item is two-two-nine point two four, citizens comments on agenda items.
I have two, but I'm not sure if they're agenda items.
Sure.
We have Heather Martinez.
So the other section.
And we have a Tanya Karpinski. Okay, thank you.
Did we have anybody that didn't get a card in that wished to make comment on agenda items? All right, with no citizen comments on agenda items, oh, we did, sorry. No, oh, no, sorry. So with no citizens' comments on agenda items, the next item is. Oh, you do, I'm sorry.
She does.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And when you're done, if you could just fill out one of the form. Oh, we do have it?
No.
When you're done, if you could just fill one of these out for Ms. Heinz.
Michelle Sample, in regards in your packets here, on November eighteenth meeting under section two oh four point two four, staffing presentation. Not going to read exactly what it says because I cannot say the names, but a certain board member asked what the fund balance will be after the shifting of the E S S E R funds. Person underneath it said the figures were not available at the time. I'm asking, are they available tonight? Are they done yet? Or are they still not available and not here? If they're online, please direct me to where it needs to go. Also, what are the dates, you guys have had time to figure these out, but what are the dates for the board retreat? When is phase two of the community focus group being formed? When are the board workshops and the important topics? Some of the board members do know that I do go to these. I did take a few years off from my life, but I am back, so I want to attend these. Even if other citizens do not show up, I will be attended, I'm letting the board know that. I am still waiting on my request on, as I left on November, excuse me, December twentieth, about how much extra all this financial investigation is costing the district since we're running out of money and laying staffs off is still on the table to be proposed, which I am completely still against. The layoffs of more staff is not in the best interest for this district. Students rely on the staff in each and every building and each and every level. Taking away the, taking away the student's safety and community that they have in there by getting rid of all the staff downsizing is not what's best for the educational goal for these students. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on the tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no other comments, the next item is two-thirty point two four, election of officers of the Board of Education. So yeah, this is when we're going to elect for the next year our officers for the Board of Education. Do I have any nominations for office of president?
I'd like to nominate Bradley Gray as president, to be president.
I have a nominee for office of president. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, Ms. Heinz?
Roll call vote. Dr. Weaver.
Yes.
Ms. May.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell.
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Mr. Cox.
Yes.
President Gray.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero, congratulations.
The next is for office of vice president. Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate. One second.
Oh, I think I heard you first.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Weaver.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, that works out. All right. Ms. Heinz?
I'd like to make a nomination.
Do we have any other nominations?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Kimberly May.
Dr. Weaver was the first one offered, so Ms. Heinz?
Roll call vote. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so the next is for office of secretary.
I'd like to nominate myself.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Heinz.
Okay, we will allow Dr. Weaver to nominate Ms. Heinz. Do we have any other nominations for secretary? Okay, Ms. Heinz?
Roll call vote. Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes. President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and the next is the office of treasurer. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Kimberly May.
Do we have any other nominations? All right, Ms. Heinz?
Mr. Neal?
Upstain.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Can I say something? Did you nominate Kimberly May?
Yes.
And we just nominated her as vice president?
No.
No, I failed.
Dr. Weaver was received six votes for.
Oh, did the motion fall? Oh, I wasn't finished, I'm sorry. Um, yes.
Mr. Cox?
Upstain.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes.
I missed it.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Okay, so we have five and two. I'm sorry, Ms. May, I'm sorry, Ms. May.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Motion carries, congratulations, Ms. May.
So going into this new year, I will continue serving as president, Dr. Weaver will be serving as vice president, Ms. Heinz will be serving as secretary, and Ms. May will continue to serve as treasurer. And for the next item on the agenda, two-three, two-thirty-one point two four, we have the consent agenda.
Move approved.
Do you have a second?
Support.
Support. All right, Ms. Heinz?
Roll call vote. Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
All right, moving on to two-thirty-two point two four, we have Board of Education Committee reports, and the only item on here is the Finance Committee report. Ms. May?
Thank you, President Gray. The Finance Committee meeting of the Board of Trustees of Wayne Westland Community Schools met Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, beginning at four thirty-one P M via Zoom platform. Mrs. Abney Mitchell and Ms. May were present. Mrs. Polikovich shared the interest in purchasing an Anam- Anamaj table for health and science career tech classes. The purchase can be charged to two grants. Mrs. Samira presented information to the committee regarding Apple disposition recycling. Mrs. Samira also shared an interest in replacing our current access points for all of our students. This purchase will be reimbursed eighty-five percent of the cost and fifteen percent will be charged to the general fund. Mr. Spizak informed the committee of the bid information for the asbestos, asbestos abatement at Graham, Taft, and Wildwood. He also shared a recommendation for moving bid package C. Mrs. Campbell presented the investment report and check register. Dr. Dignan thanked his team for their hard work, board members did the same. The meeting was adjourned at four fifty-one P M. Complete minutes should be available on the district website. The next meeting will take place on February eighth, two thousand twenty-four via Zoom.
Thank you, Ms. May. Next item on the agenda is two-thirty-three point two four, review and approval of business service and finance. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item that I have to put before the board today is the purchase of the Anamaj table for CTE. It's an incredible piece of state-of-the-art equipment that will benefit our health and science programs. The Anamaj table is a sole-source piece of equipment that's essentially a fully segmented, interactive, three-dimensional, human dissection table. Students can learn as they visualize human anatomy exactly as they would on an actual cadaver in the anatomy, in an anatomy class. The total cost of the table is one hundred five thousand two hundred forty dollars. Our CTE program was able to secure ninety-three thousand forty-four dollars for this purchase through the section sixty-one C equipment grant that was approved by Wayne Reesaw. The remaining twelve thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars would be paid from CTE's equipment budget where funds are available. The total purchase will not exceed one hundred five thousand two hundred forty dollars. I recommend that the board approves the purchase of the Anamaj table as presented at the January twenty twenty-four Finance Committee meeting by Ms. Kimberly Polikovich.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I just have one quick question. Okay, so with this, once this pay, we don't have to have any other? Oh, sorry.
Support?
Support?
Discussion?
For discussion, yes.
I'll support.
Okay, I just had just one quick question. So once we purchase this table, there's no other fees, any, no maintenance, no licenses, fees, anything, because I'm just worried about other costs.
Well, like any other electrical piece of equipment or digital piece of equipment, there is the potential for repairs down the road, but, you know, those are unpredictable, and if we did have something go wrong with the table, yeah, we would have to pay for
But no licensing fees or anything like that?
No.
Okay, no, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Ms. Heinz?
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Ms. Heinz, yes. Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
And President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, six one.
The second, excuse me, the second item that I have for the board tonight is the consideration of obsolete Apple devices. The Wayne Westland Community Schools Technology Department is in possession of thirty-eight MacBooks and seventy-four assorted iPads that are beyond their useful life and are in, and are no longer in commission. Ms. Cinda Sumara, Executive Director of Technology, contacted various resale vendors and found that a company called Second Life Mac offered to, offered the buyback quote for these obsolete devices. They'll pay the district eight thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars for eighty-two of the devices, the remaining thirty have no resale value and will be appropriately recycled. I recommend that the board approves the sale of the eighty-two obsolete Apple devices as presented at the January twenty twenty-four Finance Committee meeting by Ms. Sumara. The proceeds of the sale will go to the general fund.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do you have a second?
Support.
Do we have any discussion? Mr. Cox?
I have a question. By saying obsolete, does that mean that they no longer function? They won't accept an update? They won't?
Correct, yeah, so they, this buyback company would use them for parts or things like that, but yes, they, they're, like, their operating systems are beyond useful life.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion?
Somehow I feel the same way about myself, so.
All right, if there's no other discussion, Ms. Heinz?
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. My third item is the district WAPs or Wireless Access, Access Points Replacement. Wayne Westland Community Schools Wireless Infrastructure works off of seven hundred and ten wireless access points strategically positioned throughout the district. The life expectancy of WAPs is seven years, and ours, mostly having been installed in sixteen and seventeen, are surpassing that seven-year mark. The district has a one-time opportunity to receive federal funding or E-rate, education rate assistance for eighty-five percent of the purchase of WAP replacements. After undergoing a formal RFP process for project pricing, we received a repo, a proposal from Inacom TSG that is competitively priced and actually under RMC pricing. The suggested replacement WAPs are also seg- segmented so that in future upgrades, only a portion of each device will need to be replaced, saving the district more money in the future. The total proposal came in at eight hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars. The eighty-five percent E-rate reimbursement will amount to seven hundred thirty-seven thousand three hundred twenty dollars and sixty cents, leaving the district responsible for one hundred thirty thousand one hundred fifteen dollars and forty cents, which would come from the technology equipment budget in the general fund. This pricing and re, E-rate reimbursement opportunity has an expiration of approximately one month, and if not approved, could potentially cost the district close to a million dollars later. I recommend that the board approves the purchase of the replacement WAPs from Inacom TSG during this federal funds reimbursement window of opportunity.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Support.
All right, do we have any discussion on this?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Thank you. During the October twelfth, I'm going to tell a story, someone kind of tell a story. During the October twelfth Finance Committee meeting, and this is coming out of the minutes, Mr. Neal asked what our projected fund balance is for twenty twenty-four, and at that time, Mrs. Campbell shared that she was unable, she was in the process of putting together a mid-year budget amendment. At this point, she, at this point, she does not have a solid answer in response. Mr. Neal asked if we would have an answer by the board meeting. Ms. Campbell shared that the full amendment will not be complete for presentation in October, but she will present as quickly as possible. We were later told by Dr. Dignan we would know before Thanksgiving break. I asked most recently at our January sixteenth Finance Committee meeting, and was told by Mrs. Campbell that they have not done a mid-year amendment and that she is currently working on that. She will not have an answer for this until March. There's just too much uncertainty, lack of knowledge, and the lack of a comprehensive plan to continue to make purchases, especially when less than a month ago, we were asked to lay off positions to the total of one point seven million dollars. I understand that this is a great opportunity, and I truly appreciate the hard work of the team to seek this opportunity, but I'm not comfortable with this purchase, just understanding that our community has asked us for answers, they've asked us for the amount that we need to cut, they've asked us for the fund balance, and we're not able to provide that information, and so I don't think we're in a good place to continue to make purchases.
Mr. Neal?
Just a couple of questions. How long is the window open to purchase this?
It closes in February, next month.
Before our meeting, or?
No, at the end of the month.
At the end of the month. And what's, what does this do? Explain it a little bit.
So if, if our, well, when our wireless access points fail, it shuts down all digital electronic communication in the district. There wouldn't be any email, any smartboards, any, any kind of digital or electronic communications or instruction. There would be no laptops, there wouldn't be no computers, there would be no, you wouldn't be able to hook your phone to the Wi-Fi, we wouldn't have any Wi-Fi.
All schools are included?
The whole district.
Every school?
Yes.
All right, so my comment would be, you know, penny wise, pound foolish. If we fail to purchase these now, then it looks like later we'll be on the hook for seven hundred, no, the total amount, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
That's actually incorrect, because this is special pricing. We went out for formal RFP, and the pricing expires as well, so if we were to go out for bid later and not be able to take advantage of this federal funding window, my estimate would be that it would cost us between a million and a million and a half.
All right, so if we wait, it could cost us a million and a half as opposed to a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Pretty easy vote for me, thank you.
Quick question.
Ms. Heinz?
Because I know this is the beginning of the year, and a lot of licenses and things are, is there, we can get a list of things like ahead of time, so we can kind of digest? Because this makes me so uncomfortable with our situation, that we can kind of know, you know, ahead of time, like, how many things are we going to have to try to figure out that we're going to be approving for, like, renewals of licenses with it being a new year?
So for, for next fiscal year, is that what?
Well, this is coming up, like, just certain things we can be aware of, so we can kind of put on our radar, because like, we kind of, you know, like you said, nickel and diamond, trying to figure out which is more important, you know, because the budget situation is really scary, so, you know, as a board member, I like to kind of know ahead of time, okay, like, you know, this is coming up, so we can kind of put in our head the, for the budget.
I think that's entirely possible, yes, I mean.
Like a forecast.
I feel like, when you say the beginning of the year, though, you mean for next year, for, like, July first.
What's coming up right now, like, you know, future that we know, like, spring, because it's coming up, like, so, like, like, with this surprise, like, the million dollars, like, if it wasn't so detriment, you know what I'm saying? Because it's really scary using anything out of the general fund, so it's, I get hesitant if it's not grant funding or some already reserved for it, so that way I kind of know ahead of time, we have these that we need, you know what I'm saying, like a forecast?
So that's kind of a two-part answer. So if you would like me to put together a list of, like, all renewals that we do every year? I'm happy to do that for the start of next year. This is not actually a renewal, it was an opportunity that was presented to us. We knew that our wireless access points were beyond useful life, but we knew, also knew that we didn't have a million dollars to spend to replace them, and so when this federal funding opportunity opened up and Ms. Sumara applied for it and was granted the eighty-five percent reimbursement, we took advantage of that to try to avoid the higher costs later. So that we didn't know about very far in advance. We knew about it just shortly before we put the RFP out for it.
So I think, in following suit with what Ms., with what Mrs. Heinz is asking, when you all were putting out the RFP, if that could have come to us, and come to us to say, like, hey, this is happening, so just like we get more updates from Dr. Dignan every week, just this as an update to know that this is coming, we're looking at this, this is something we would like to do versus this coming to us tonight, and asking us to vote on it tonight. I realize it came to Finance Committee last week.
It did come to Finance Committee meeting, yes.
You knew this, you know, you guys knew this a little bit beforehand, so just bringing it.
Typically don't go to the board for RFP approval, but we could.
Right, but we're in a different situation right now, when we talk about.
Bring that, absolutely.
That would be great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes, can y'all hear me? I just want to say, you know, even though we are in a financial situation, we have to continue to move the district forward, and, and it's things that we need, so to piggyback on what Secretary Heinz was saying is that, you know, this is a new year, a new semester, it's not a new school year, it's still the school year, but it's a new calendar year and a new semester, and just like, we have stuff that we, subscriptions that we have at home, they come up for renewal, so what we asking is for something, a list, because we're going to have to, we're not going to be able to get everything. We, we're going to have to eliminate some, and if we know the list and know what's on the list, you know, like this, absolutely, this is a good deal. But what happens, when we come back next month and we have another good deal, and we keep on going on these good deals, taking these good opportunities to move our district forward, and we don't know how much money we have in the fund balance, and we don't know what we moving forward, and like, Ms. May just said, we was just talking about layoffs, and we still going to have to entertain those. So, and if we know, if, if, even if you created a list for yourself or that department created a list, and you know, maybe we need to work on this, I, but something need to be figured out, because we can't say no for everything, because this is the stuff that the district needs. This is the stuff that makes Wayne Westland a great place for great futures. So we need the stuff, but we can't keep on pushing it through when it's so many other things that we need. We need a fund balance amount, we need this, our students need that, and we need to keep our employees, so that's just, that's just, yeah.
Yep, so what I can do is I can work collaboratively, collaboratively with all the departments to put, put together a comprehensive list of subscriptions and renewals, and when they come due, and then you can have that.
Well, hopefully before they come due, so we can negotiate.
And like I say, this, this particular one was not a renewal or a subscription, and we really didn't see it coming until it was presented to us.
Good, right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Heinz?
Roll call vote. Ms. May?
No.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz, yes, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And Mr. Gray?
No.
Okay, we got, one, two, three, four, and one, two, three, no. Motion carries, I think it's like four, three.
The next item that I have for the board's consideration is for the bond project of asbestos abatement. In partnership with McCarthy Smith, we held a bid opening on December twentieth for asbestos abatement in relation to bond work at Graham, Taft Galloway, and Wildwood Elementary Schools. The lowest overall cost proposal was submitted by BDS Environmental and was a total of four hundred eight thousand dollars for asbestos abatement at all three of these schools. The cost will be paid from bond funds, and I recommend that the board approves the proposal from BDS Environmental in the amount of four hundred eight thousand for asbestos abatement.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Support.
Do we have any discussion?
Discussion. Yeah, I think it's really important to remove asbestos. Now, quick question, I don't know with this, when I used to work for the city, they had like this brownfield development type money, like, grant money from, like, the government to take care of these type of issues, does that work with the school districts as well, or is that just municipalities?
That's municipalities.
Okay, sometimes they have, like, grant money, like, the EPA, they might have for certain projects and stuff like that.
Yeah, that's, that's definitely municipalities. I'm familiar with that money.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussion? Ms. Heinz, the vote?
We got Ms. Heinz, yes, Ms. May?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, and the last item that I have for the board's consideration is another bond project. It's bid pack C for moving services. Again, we held a public bid opening on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four for moving services in relation to bond work at Adams Middle School, Graham, Stottlemyre, Taft Galloway, and Wildwood Elementary Schools. The lowest cost proposals were submitted by the following companies for the corresponding schools. For Adams, Taft Galloway, and Wildwood, University Moving and Storage submitted a proposal for one hundred sixteen thousand one hundred sixty dollars. For Stottlemyre, Oneida Group Solutions submitted a proposal for sixty-one thousand one hundred dollars, and for Graham, Palmer Moving Services submitted a proposal for forty-six thousand five hundred thirty dollars. Those were all the lowest bids for each school. The total cost for all moving services is The total cost for all moving services is two hundred twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and is to be paid from bond funds. I recommend that the board approves the proposals from University Moving and Storage in the amount of one hundred sixteen, one hundred sixteen, one hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred sixty dollars. Oneida Solutions Group in the amount of sixty-one thousand, one hundred dollars. And Palmer Moving Services in the amount of forty-six thousand, five hundred thirty dollars for moving services.
Do I have a motion? Do I have support? I'll support it. Do we have any discussion?
Quick question.
Dr. Weaver?
What are we moving? I know it's moving surfaces, I'm just kind of curious as to what we're moving.
We're moving the contents of the building offsite so that bond work can be done over the summer, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Spiesak? Thank you.
And would that furniture be stored?
Yes, stored and moved, and returned when the bond work is completed.
And that's all included in the price?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question.
Ms. Hines?
I know we passed that hundred and fifty million dollar bond, um, and I know we did a lot of construction projects. Like, how much money is left over in that? Like, how does that work?
So that, that's on your investment report, I think it's a little over thirty million, maybe thirty, between thirty and thirty-five million? I don't have that number with me, but it's on, well, no, I don't think-
It's like a pocket, like, cause I know, does it like a certain part of the bond goes like for construction stuff and a certain part goes for miscellaneous or?
No, the, the, it's, it's, the bond money goes for the bond projects. So, um, I mean, we do budget it into categories as needed, but we don't, we don't necessarily like only have so much set aside for moving, only so much set aside for the, the other, you know, like whatever that project takes, we spend out of the bond money.
And is it, cause I know when we did it, it had like different like phases, like you're gonna get so much each year, is that what it is? It's like-
Well, we're, it's, it's when you draw the money is, is the phase. So, and you don't want to draw it all at once because then you could collect too much interest and be subject to arbitrage. But you draw it in phases, we are in the third phase, we have the third phase of our money right now. And so as you do those bond projects, you draw the phases and pay to, to complete those projects. We're in the third phase, third and final phase right now of that bond issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion, Mr. Neal?
Just so it's clear, this moving services comes out of the bond money?
Yes, that's a hundred percent, both of those last two, the asbestos and the moving services are one hundred percent bond money funded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Ms. Hines, take the vote.
Alright, we have Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines? Yes, President Gray?
Yes.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you.
Alright, next item is two thirty-four, uh, point two four, review and approval of human resource items. Dr. Feely?
Okay, thank you, President Gray. I would like to make a recommendation for Jennifer Page to be our next annual principal. Uh, Ms. Page comes to us with a Masters of Social Work from Michigan State, an educational specialist from University of Northern Colorado, and she's in the process of completing her Doctorate in Education from the University of Colorado. She also has certification, um, for a professional administrator certificate with this focus on elementary and secondary admin K-12. And prior to this position, she was a s- school social worker for Jefferson County Schools and Bay-Aronik ISD. She also was an assistant principal and interim principal at Jefferson County Schools and she currently serves as a professor at the University of Colorado Springs.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have support?
Support.
Alright, do we have any discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Page, not just-
She's not an intern.
Alright, so I thought we was trying to, um, support our own talent in-house. We don't have anybody in-house available for this position.
We did have some internal candidates that applied for the position, but she rose to the top of the pool.
She rose to the top of the, but we had some internal, so that's because I just thought that that's what we wanted to do was, you know, use what we had instead of going on the outside.
We're always looking for the most competent and talented person to get the position, but we are always exploring internal applicants as well.
Any other discussion? Alright, Ms. Hines?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. May?
Abstain.
Okay, Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, and President Gray?
Yes.
Record show, we got a four, no, five, two?
Alright, the next item is two thirty-five point two four, this is citizen comments on non-agenda items. So this is the time for anybody to, uh, come, come talk about any other issues. I believe the first one we have is, uh, Ms. Karpinski, sure.
Good evening, I think everybody's phones went off and you all saw the school is closed for tomorrow. So I will try and be brief in my, uh, three minutes here as well. One of the other citizens here tonight already addressed a good portion of what I wanted to speak to as well. And Ms. May referred to some of the same items in some of her comments tonight in approving agenda items that the board had. On the December eighteenth board meeting, Dr. Dignan shared a PowerPoint presentation that has been referred to here tonight and is also in the minutes attached to this packet. In that presentation, it stated after evaluating the district's budget, it would need around fifteen million dollars to keep the fund balance above five percent. Ms. May asked what the fund balance would be after the shifting of ESSER funds, which was also shared as part of the presentation, when layoffs were being presented as a cost savings of one point seven million dollars. Dr. Dignan responded that the figures were not available at this time. As you have heard in more than one board meeting now, we have been told that there will be an amendment to the budget in March. I'm not sure what the magic component is to March. The Wayne Westland Education Association has a contract that will need to start being negotiated. It was also stated in that meeting that Phase Two will include district-wide staffing driven by student enrollment, contract language, community focus groups will be created, board workshops and re- retreats will be held, and the process for layoffs and the positions pending were shared. Tonight, you just saw numerous action items voted on and approved, some that affected the general fund, some that did not. As Ms. May and other board members have shared here tonight, continuing to have action items on your board agenda, asking for approval to spend money from the general fund without providing any information still as to what the general fund balance is, is unacceptable. When will we have the general fund balance? How do you continue to make purchases without knowing what is in your bank account? We have contract negotiations coming up. We have a presentation that was shared on December eighteenth and we have no new information. I hope the board considers this and with the new officers in place truly moves forward in this new year with providing those answers.
Thank you.
Yes, we have a Ms. Heather Marti, is it Martinez?
Yep. Good evening, my name is Heather Merciness and I'd like to start off by saying thank you so much for fulfilling my FOIA requests. I haven't had time to go through the four thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine pages I've received, but don't worry, I will. The biggest issue I have seen so far is there doesn't seem to be any checks and balances established in a way that there should be. I think that is what has led us to be where we are today with a lack of transparency, pointing of fingers and a great deal of confusion. Furthermore, decisions continue to be made unilaterally without people keeping, keeping people in the loop, especially direct supervisors. And yet, there's still no real plan to address the loss of funds. What's more upsetting is the only plans that have been suggested result in the greatest impact to the students of Wayne Westland. Now, on top of all the loss of funds, there's a collective lack of trust in the district leadership. As a result, the district has lost several staff members already who are going elsewhere. Without guidance and direction, there is a huge anxiety that is running through this district for your staff, not knowing what's going to happen at any given moment, when a plan might come out or might not come out, what it might include and what it might not include. That's a very uneasy situation for someone to live in from day to day. You claim the great futures start right here. Unfortunately, until some major changes take place, the future of Wayne Westland is unknown. We've heard again tonight, March, something's coming in March, but we still don't know exactly where the money is and when you're gonna have that plan. Isn't there a forecast that you could share? Mrs. May asked for a, a, a projection or, or Mrs. Hines of what's gonna be spent and when. There should be a budget forecast that can easily be shared. Finally, Dr. Weaver, in response to your email me, asking me why I'm here and where, why I continue to show up, I want to let you know that I show up for the kids in Wayne Westland. I have always advocated for kids first and foremost. Anyone that's worked with me knows I always do what's best for kids. Even when they didn't agree with me, they knew I was always advocating for what's best for kids. In addition, I'm also here and will continue to be here as a voice to all of the staff members who are afraid to use their own voice. Unfortunately, there are a great deal of them that feel they can't speak up out of fear of retaliation. Some of you board members previously mentioned that you would be visiting buildings and talking to them directly. I hope that some of you have already done that and that you continue to do so and form relationships with people so that they can be heard. The board needs to start taking action sooner rather than later to ensure the community, students and staff get the answers and support that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. That was the last one?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any additional, uh, comment? Alright. And, uh, just for the record, just, uh, state your full name again.
Michelle Sample, said the business part, this is personal. Um, question, I understand and I know we're talking about construction and policy bids and everything. Personally for me, what is going on and how much longer is it gonna take Hamilton to finish their playground? Is there somebody that I can contact? I do appreciate that it went on and, and I live right across the street from it, but winter came, knew they couldn't do the work and I respect that. However, the orange fences are being knocked down by the children, the parts that they're not supposed to be keeps being knocked down. It, I don't think it's safe, so I just want to know who I could speak to and get that done. Okay, Ms. Spiesak, thank you very much, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, any other comment? Okay.
Hello, my name is Tony Spiesak. I have worked for the district for thirty-seven years and this is my last board meeting. And I wanted to thank all of you, you've been fantastic over the years. I was proud to be a Wayne Westland employee for all this time. I'm a graduate of Wayne Memorial. I just want to say thanks to, uh, Dr. Dignan and to all the board members, so thank you very much.
Do we have any other comment? Alright, the next item on the agenda, two thirty-six point two four, superintendent's report comments, Dr. Dignan.
Thank you, uh, President Gray. First off, and, and I thought it was gonna come from the finance committee, uh, Tony, thank you, uh, for your thirty-seven years of service. It's incredible to, uh, be a student here and then kind of make your career here. So again, you're gonna be greatly missed and we appreciate all your contributions. I'd like to congratulate the board members on their new positions and I'm looking forward to working with each one of you. So, um, I heard, uh, the board workshop, we're having one this, uh, Saturday from nine to three at the Career Tax Center. Uh, there, we're gonna talk about board governance, we have M A S B coming in, they're gonna do a presentation, then M S B O is gonna talk about the five percent, uh, kind of threshold with our fund balance, so a- again, anyone's welcome to come. Um, we will have another, uh, board workshop where we're gonna talk about, uh, setting up the community forums and that's something that I'm gonna have to get with the school board because again, it, it's gonna be a unified approach. I'm happy and excited to announce the following administrative appointments. Ms. Diane Green is gonna be, uh, the interim assistant principal at Franklin Middle School for the duration of the year. She's been a dedicated member to our school and community and most recently servicing as the assistant principal at Wayne Memorial High School. Ms. Stacy Bukowski has been appointed the interim principal at Adams Middle School. Ms. Bukowski's been serving at Adams as assistant principal. Her wealth of experience and deep understanding of the school's values made her an excellent choice for this role. Ms. Julie Mydich will serve as the interim assistant principal for the remainder of the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'd like to thank the Detroit Institute of Arts for their continued partnership with Wayne Westland. We established, uh, in the spring and then in the summer, a pretty solid relationship. We've had a lot of our elementary students and middle school students go to, uh, the DIA. Uh, the mission's free, we have them grab a bag lunch and, and again, the bussing's covered by the DIA, so we're grateful for that partnership. Wayne Westland's partnering with Graduation Alliance, uh, to offer opportunities to our community members who have not graduated or received their GED. The Michigan Twenty-three Plus Adult Program is free of charge for Michigan residents twenty-three years or older who exited high school before earning a high school diploma or a high school equivalent. Upon completion of this program, students earn a state-issue high school diploma, not a GED. Participants also have the opportunity to earn industry's, uh, credentials as part of the program. We have a lot of, uh, members in our community that don't have a high school diploma or a GED. So if you know somebody, you can have them contact the board office and we'll get them, um, kind of set up. And on that note, I'll end and turn it back.
Alright, the next, uh, item is two thirty-seven point two four, review and recommendations, Board of Education. I'm gonna start on this side, Mr. Neal?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have one thing to say and, thank you, Tony. Uh, thirty-seven years is a really, really long time. I don't know anybody that knows as much about this school system as you do and has the ability to do all the things that you do. I hope we can figure out a way to download what's in your head before you leave. Maybe one of these things we bought tonight will work, I don't know. But, uh, you're absolutely invaluable, I don't know how we can replace somebody like you. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Cox?
Thank you, President Gray. Tony, I'd like to add my, uh, my, my words of thanks to Mr. Neal's and to say that you have always been part of the solution, no matter what the problem or the issue was. You've, also, the work that you've done for this school district has been a point of pride for everyone that's sat on this Board of Education throughout your tenure as well as the citizens and the parents who appreciate the fact that their children go to school in buildings that are clean and in good repair. Good job, Tony.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
I want to say thank you and congratulations to the Eddie Hicks students. And I also want to say thank you to Tony for your service to Wayne Westland and on your way out, leave your pager number. I ain't gonna say your cell phone, so if they ain't got no pager, they can't page you. Leave your pager number, but no, we appreciate you and it's just an honor and also- And also, your story, it would reflect on so many of our students. From them knowing that you worked here for thirty-seven years, that you went to school here, and that you probably live in a community. Those are the things that our students need to see. As kids, we went to school in the communities that we lived in. Our friends went to the same schools that us. Our neighbors was our teachers, and those are the things that grounded us. So we thank you for that, and we appreciate you. And I don't know if I have the authority to say this or not, but you always were for. If they don't let you here in here, you can come to my house. I have authority there. And I'd just like to say, I'd like to piggyback off of Dr. Dignan about Graduation Alliance. I know from the Inster community, I know fifteen students that I have encouraged to be enrolled, and they have been actively enrolled since January. I'm talking to their counselor on the phone, they echo, their advisor. She's calling me on the phone and say they haven't completed their assignments, and now I'm trying to start a tutoring group for those. But it's fifteen young adults between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one. And also, I'd just like to say, congratulations to my colleagues on their new positions on the board, and and thank you to all the, the board members, and congratulations, this recognize, we, we recognizing board members this month. I want everybody to be proud of the work that we do. We ran through this office. We made a promise to people that we was gonna do stuff. Let's do it. We didn't promise that none of us was gonna go home with each other, but when we sitting here, we need to work together. We need to remember when we was out there running for the seat, the promises that we made. So I appreciate you, and happy appreciation month.
Thank you.
Ms. May.
Thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year. I want to say thank you to Kate and Chloe for doing a very nice job in leading us with the pledge this evening, and to Mrs. G for all of her hard work. Mr. Spiezak, thank you, thank you, thank you. I've shared my sentiments with you during the Finance Committee meeting, but publicly, I will say to you that I truly, truly appreciate you. You have always been so kind, so knowledgeable, and willing to always go above and beyond to ensure that the district was in the best standing ever. The buildings, as Trusty Cox said, are impeccable, and that, that is all of you. And to have been here thirty-seven years, to have gone to school here, to remain in this community, to remain dedicated, that is just, that's something that you can't even put words to. So you will truly be missed, and as Ms. Abney Mitchell said, you know, leave your phone number. I'm saying your phone number, not your pager. But again, thank you so much, and I wish you the absolute best in your retirement. Next, I'd just like to, Dr. Dignan, you spoke a little about some of the positions that we're backfilling, just in regards to the number of resignations that we've received, and that is concerning. I appreciate the hard work from both you and Dr. Ophilly to fill the positions, but I have to say I am concerned about the lack of continuity for our students. We see so much movement, and we talk so much about relationships and the importance of relationship building, and so when kids are constantly getting new people in front of them, they're losing that, and so that is a piece that is of concern for me that I would like to express. The other piece is just based upon my experience, and this was talked about at the last meeting, as the Director of State and Federal Programs and Continuous Improvement. One of the things that I do understand well are checks and balances, compliance, and most importantly, budget planning. And so with that being shared, I'd like to make a recommendation that we begin the process to seek RFPs. I understand that that has to be a motion, I'm sorry, to seek R, RFPs to complete a, to have a complete forensic audit, to help us all understand what has occurred, what we need to put in place to avoid it from happening again. It is concerning to me that we have been in this place before that was shared at the previous meeting by Trusty Cox, and so we seem to continue to make the same mistakes. And so I'd like for us to find a way to not make those mistakes. What are the mistakes we're making? What checks and balances do we need to have in place? So understanding that that has to be a motion, I recognize this may not be the time to make the motion, but these are the recommendations. So I am sharing that as a recommendation to my fellow colleagues. I think that's something that we owe to our community, our staff, and most importantly, to our students, because they are the ones that are suffering right now. So thank you, and I'll have a good evening.
Ms. Hines.
Yes, I'd like to thank the students that was here earlier for the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to say, Tony, I'm gonna miss you. I remember you when I was in high school, like seeing you every day away from all your, like, when we had to do our bond for two thousand eighteen, we had that team of eight, and we really rocked it out to size, and I'm just, I'm gonna miss you. Like, you have been like inspirational. And even with the school buildings, man, I've never seen it so clean. It was like shiny, you could see your face on them. I mean, you have been phenomenal in the district. Definitely, like the girl said, you have to keep in touch. I mean, I miss Chef Tony. I mean, these are things that make Wayne Westland amazing, and I just hate to see like the direction. I hope things get better, and I am concerned about the kids. I'm concerned about this new graduating class with so much, like you said, consternation, movements and shifting and, you know, I definitely just kind of miss the way it used to be. Just, we, big family, just, you know, been here for years, but I'm gonna miss you. So thank you, and you put your heart and your soul in Wayne Westland. You are greatly appreciated.
Dr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tony Spiezak. You're getting in the feels tonight. Thirty-seven years. Started working here the year I was born. I tell you, over the years, there's been very few constants, because something like a district moves and changes all the time. But you have always been there to answer the questions. You've always been there to help, to move forward. And I can't say enough about you. I think it's been said that, you know, we may have to call upon you from time to time. Maybe the board wouldn't mind, you know, a sub, a subcontract of some sort. When you get bored and you find out that being on the outside really isn't all you want to be, instead of going to Walmart, we'd rather you, you know, come back here. Spending is as crucial to a district as breathing is for a human being. You have to spend money from time to time to, to be able to move the district forward. I am concerned, it seems that for months now, you know, if you ask me what I have in my wallet, I can tell you sometimes, most times it's zero, but at least I can look in my wallet and figure out what my bottom line is for that day. I don't think anyone on the board has asked for projections. We've just simply asked, what is it today? Where are we at today? At the close of business today, where are we at? And we can't ever seem to get an answer to that. I'm not worried about where we'll be a week from now. That's an overstatement, you understand, but where are we right now? All of you, if you're honest about it, whether you work for the district or you don't, you work for somebody else. You know that spending out of your pocket is important, where you're not going to have lights on in your home, and you're not going to have this and that, so please understand that when we come up on a one-time deal, and I know it was said earlier, you know, how many one-time deals we gonna have? Well, I, I hope we get a lot of those. When we're gonna be reimbursed seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, I think the figure was, I'm willing to spend that one hundred and thirty. That is not in any way to say that I think our district employees with contracts coming up should not be cons, you know, should, should be able to receive raises, whatever's going to happen here. But I just, I just wanted to say tonight that we can, we can mull over every purchase, but ultimately, it's not going to bring us to the goal, and the goal's moving forward. Ms. Martinez mentioned me by name, so I'll give her the same recognition. My question, if you would be honest about it, is that you do not live within our district borders. So I think it was a very appropriate question to find out what your motives are, and that's what I ask you for. You didn't respond to my email. You decided to come here and blindside. So I just want to say to you that whatever it is your goals are, I hope it is for the betterment of our district, and with that, I thank you.
So the first thing I want to do is thank the students that came and said the pledge to us. I don't think I've ever seen a student as excited as Chloe was to receive her certificate as she was when I handed it to her, and it's nice to have a special moment like that as opposed to some of the other issues we've been dealing with. And second, I do want to thank Mr. Spiezak. I know it was a joke from Dr. Weaver, but I can actually say as a thirty-seven-year-old that you did start the year I was born.
But what are you trying to say?
You're at least a year old. But beyond that, I do really appreciate people who are from this community coming and wanting to work here. As a John Glenn graduate myself, being a part of this educational community is important to me, and I'm glad to see that not only were you here for thirty-seven years, but you were here for thirty-seven years after getting a quality education from our schools. So I want to thank you again for the time that you spent with us here. And the second thing I do want to talk about is I do want to talk about the, the access point vote. I, I'm all for technology, and I completely understand technology needs to be upgraded from time to time. I was a technician at Apple for a number of years. I understand the failure of electronic devices, and I do understand that this was a great deal. Unfortunately, nothing's a good deal if you can't afford it, and so that's why I want to echo the comments made by a number of the other members up here, that we are still looking to find out from the administration what the balance is and what, what it's going to look like going forward. I know we've said that number as March, I mean, that date is March, then we'll have that information. However, I would encourage the administration to try to get us information regarding the health of the fund sooner than that, as we do have another meeting coming up in February. And it's, in my opinion, just not appropriate at this time for us to be spending more money without knowing the financial situation the district is in. As we have talked, some of the right sizing of this district that may come may end up having to be on the backs of building employees, and every dollar we spent, spend is a dollar that will be reflected in that, so I want to remind everybody of that as we move forward when we're making decisions without knowing the fund balance. And I, and I hate to end on that sad note there, but I do want to thank you all for coming out tonight. I know the weather is getting a little bad out there, and I know the weather will continue throughout the night. But I do appreciate all the members of the community, all the members, all the teachers and other staff that come out here on a night like tonight to voice your opinions, and also to, you know, be a part of this process. So I hope you all drive safe getting home, and with that, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Say it.
All right, all in favor?